...education to come to order. We have a roll call. Mr. Guerman.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Dr. Lowe did text, she is on her way. Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano.
Here.
Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor, I believe he had an intention of coming this evening. Did anybody hear from Mr. Thor?
Have not heard from him.
To the contrary, probably on his way. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Present.
A quorum is present, shall we rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on June 19th of 2019. It is now time for our focus topic. Mr. Isola. The Professional Learning Plan, sir.
So, by code, we have to present to the Board the financial impact of the professional learning in the district, and that becomes a professional learning plan. Professional learning plan has to also include, among the professional development, the professional learning goals for the following school year. It also has to include in it our mentoring plan, how we plan on working with our new staff, identifying needs of the district, et cetera. I've shared that document at Education Committee. At our last Board meeting, Dr. Lowe read out the conversation that we had around that document as part of her committee briefs. The document itself is lengthy. Rather than go through the entire document itself, which has been shared out, I wanted to highlight the three goal areas, and then specifically the financial impact of that work, as it is the requirement by law. But in sharing out what we did, I want to take us back to a few months ago when some of our district instructional coaches came out and led the team, led the Board through a bit of a data dive. They did that work shortly after our learning design team had met. Our learning design team met, which you see in the gears up over here. So, the learning design team met, as part of their work reflected on the year of implementation for professional learning, this past year. Working with each one of the representative school improvement panels that were present, we modeled a process that they could use to kind of dive through the data and understand the impact of the professional learning. It's not enough just to do professional learning. It's not enough to measure its popularity with staff. We have to understand its impact in terms of student performance. So, we walked through the connection of those two pieces, professional learning, student performance. Then, from there, each school improvement panel was charged with going back to their school, designing a one-page infographic to communicate out the successes and challenges of the professional learning over this past year, and how, and then collect information from the staff on what could be professional learning goals for the following school year. They then, at the next learning design team, brought all that information back to the whole group. Each school shared out its infographic, its one-pager. We took all that information. They also shared out what they felt were their tentative goals for next school year in terms of their professional learning, for each school. And then, the whole learning design team, again, representatives of every school improvement panel, engaged in a gallery walk. We went through each one of the plans, each one of the sets of goals, each one of the infographics. We sort of post-it noted the things that were really standout, the things that we thought were wonderful, the things that left us with questions, et cetera. From that, we pulled together what we thought might be the tentative district goals for professional learning. So, and by doing that, by taking what we have gained from the classroom through to the school improvement panels, to the district level, we better ensure that there's alignment between all of those goals. I have to say, it was, it was, it was a powerful experience to go through that whole process. In between those two learning design team meetings is when the coaches came out and did the data dive with you. They were sharing an infographic that they had designed to kind of walk through what that process looks like. So, now, I return to you with the infographic for the entire district for the professional learning plan. Behind me are the three goals, or at least goal areas. So, personalized learning will continue to be a professional learning goal for the district. And really, it's about strengthening the connections and communication. So, the connections between the five elements of our personalized learning plan, and our communications out, so, so all stakeholders better understand what that work is and what it could look like. New Staff Academy continues to be a goal because we're going into our third year of the cohort. So, this will be the third and final year for the first cohort going through the New Staff Academy. Their focus this year will be action research and teacher leadership. This is spelled out in length in the actual document because it's part of the mentoring process. In that third year, while they engage in some sort of research that they are most interested in and are supported through that, they will also be meeting on the same night that the new year-one cohort will be meeting. So, they will have an opportunity to share back to the year-one teachers, now that they have had the experience of two to three years in the district. They'll share back those experiences and work with the year-one teachers. It's about giving back, sort of inculcating people into that sense of what is teacher leadership. The third goal, which is directly aligned to the goal area of the strategic plan that will soon be in effect, that actually is in effect because it was board-approved at the last meeting, is the social-emotional learning. And really, this, for this goal year, it's about implementing consistent practices and consistent understanding for all. That's both in terms of social-emotional learning and wellness. So, this is one of those pieces where, while the work is incredibly important and absolutely urgent, we want to make sure that we're communicating consistently what those practices should be across the district. So, we'll be engaging in that throughout. In terms of the thing link, so we have the New Staff Academy and these particular goal areas. So, we have goal descriptions, connections, and rationales. I'm not walking through all this. There's a lot of language in here. When we developed the goals, we then took the draft of the goals and brought them back to our instructional coaches during their PLC time. After that, we then brought it to the supervisors and vice principals during our curriculum and instruction meeting. We then brought it to the principals during the leadership team meeting. We then brought it to the senior admin team. So, we kind of took it all around all of our circles to get everybody's input on what should be the goals. The coaches really felt strongly that if you were to read nothing else in this plan, it would be good to read this first page of the actual document, and that link has been shared out. This walks you through all of the thinking, all of the emphasis, all of the priority that supports those three goal areas. There's also some links to some other additional information that you might find useful. I'll just scroll over. When you're reading the plan, you have the goal areas over here on the left. You have the rationale over here on the right, and what we think it would look like once it's been accomplished. But also, it's tied into our strategic plan. It is all tied into the newest strategic plan. And it is also tied into the evaluation format of the school leaders through the desired effect. These are, in that document, you will have, it is linked into a Google folder that brings you to each one of the schools' infographics that they produced through the learning design team and into the school improvement panel. Again, I think it's well worth a few minutes to peruse some of these on your own. It shows the consistency and coherence of practice, but it also shows the variety and individuality of each one of those schools. And I thought it was, you know, it is, I think, again, powerful to look at how each district went about it. This piece alone also shows the impact of what the learning design team has had because these are the practices that we shared and modeled through that team, and then you can see them implemented into the buildings. Mr. Bon Giovanni. It should have been directly in the, it actually, if it's not attached to this Board agenda, it was in the last Board agenda out of the committee briefs. If it's not on this one, I will make sure that it gets sent back out to the Board again in full for tomorrow. So, with that, let me give you the, let me give you the money. So, this is the financial impact statement. So, this is the second page within the document. So, what we don't want to have is a set of disparate goals, district goal, committee goal, Board goal, professional learning goal, school goals, and they're all different. Then, we're shooting a lot of different arrows at a lot of different targets. What we want to do is put more wood behind fewer arrows. So, trying to take all of the different goals and combine them together. So, on the left-hand side here, you see we have the education district and Board goals. These are not the exact goals, but think in terms of like the paraphrasing or summaries of the goals. So, these are where all the goals align for the Education Committee, the district goals, the Board goals. The district professional learning goals, again, are laid out over here on the right-hand side in their brief form. The budgetary impact is laid out down below. So, everything from the continuing education units to the professional development in-service budget, in this, it does say development because that's how the state recognizes it, even though the state standard says professional learning. I shared this at the Education Committee meeting. I do believe Dr. Lowe had read this out in her briefs last month. But I think it is just, again, worth noting, roughly $100,000 for the professional, the impact of the professional learning, $100,000 worth of, of the budget. In doing, in looking at that, we have a little over 1,000 employees in total, certificated, non-certificated, classroom, other, you know, support. So, that breaks down to just under $100 per employee for professional learning. It is a powerful statement when you think about what we're able to accomplish. And I think it is a true compliment, a true testament to the talent that is, exists within this district. You've heard Mr. Isola talk about professional learning done in such a way that it's for us, by us, that we leverage the talents that exist to support the developing talents of others. And by doing that, we are able to do so much incredible work in this arena for far less than what otherwise would be the cost. So, in a time where budgets are shrinking and state funding is being cut, I think we have proven an extensive return on investment for what is, while it's a big ticket, it is a rather small amount when you think about the per-staff expense of that. With that, that really is the extent of the professional learning plan as it should be presented to the full Board. But again, I would encourage you, I'll send out the link if it's not easily available so that everyone has a chance to peruse through the entire document itself.
Thank you.
And it's not on there? Here's what I'll do, folks. I will send it to you right now.
Anybody have any questions or comments about what we heard? No? I do, I have two, just real briefly. One, I love the fact that as part of the new staff meeting, that staff who went through this a couple of years ago is there partially just in terms of the comfort level. It's almost like we tell, sometimes you have an eighth grade meet with an incoming sixth grade to tell them, you know, it's going to be okay. You're going to get, walk through this, you're going to get help through this. So, I would imagine, especially with a new staff, and if that new staff is, is really new staff, meaning they're not coming from another district, but if they're coming into a district as challenging as ours with our curriculum, it's great to be able to have another teacher there saying, it's, it's going to be okay. The other piece that, just a comment, you know, I've been fortunate enough that, I guess, two or three times now over the years, I've gone to some of the programs through the Staff Academy that you've done in terms of the teachers training teachers. And, look, I remember one in particular from three years ago that I still talk about it to people that that particular session stuck, you know, stayed with me so strongly. So, I love those sessions. I love the fact that our staff is so willing to share their expertise and knowledge with, with other staff members. I think it's just great.
It is certainly the strength of the work that we do, you know. And that's not to say that people don't come in from the outside. There's a value in that as well. So, it is about striking the balance. But I will say, in affirmation of what you just shared, that is where, when we look at the survey results, those are generally the surveys that get the greatest amount of impact, is the ones where staff is working with staff, staff is sharing with staff. We get great results. And again, that's not to say that we get poor return on investment when we have outside people come in. Those are also great. But that value of being together, of exchanging ideas, it builds, it's referred to as collective efficacy. Basically, when I see you sharing your work, it builds my belief in what you're doing, and therefore, it builds my belief in what I can do. So, now, we have efficacy together. We believe in our ability to affect change on behalf of students. So, it's, it's not just powerful in that I'm learning from you. I'm also becoming, I'm believing in myself more by being with you and learning from you.
In fact, that one session, going back to a couple of years ago, it's interesting because, not to point out anybody by name, but the other piece that I remembered so strongly about that was, it was a piece that was across the curriculum, the different, you know, touched the language arts. It touched history. It, it touched.
Was this your podcast session? This is the podcast session?
It was.
I remember you talking about this.
I'm telling you, that one has stayed with me from the day I saw that. That's at least three years ago, and I just remember how strong that one was.
Yeah. And, to be honest, staff still talk about that as well. But now, they talk about that and so much more. But again, it's about leveraging the talents as much as possible that we have, and then balancing that with what else needs to be, and how do we need to be inspired by things outside of the district, so.
Great, thank you very much. And you're, and you're right, in terms of the cost, I think the cost is well worth it.
If I can just ask, I did send the link, did it, thank you very much. Okay, sorry for the inconvenience.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Preston.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
At this time, I believe we've discussed with the President, Superintendent, changed the order of the day, and moved to Mr. Isola's Superintendent Report as he has a presentation embedded in there. And that would be better than us breaking for executive at this time, with your permission, sir. Superintendent of School, Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everyone. So, we have just some minor updates, and then a presentation, which we'll, we'll front-load for you in just a sec. So, as we look at the update since we last met, I think the biggest event, obviously, was the two graduations that took place at Middle School South and right here at Middle School North. They were absolutely, really wonderful, wonderful culminating, a wonderful culminating activity or celebration of our student success over the years. I can tell you that I got a call from Mr. Miller, an email from a few of you about the weather. We successfully navigated it once again because there is complexity in June afternoons when we talk about the northeast and weather. But it couldn't have been more beautiful, a little warm, but certainly, we were able to have the outside ceremony, which affords the opportunity for, you know, opening to unlimited seats for the family members, and I think that's a wonderful thing. I attended here at Middle School North, and one of the things, my, my big takeaway was the few speeches that were made by students, the student achievers, were so confirming that our students, now, they're high-performing students, we know that, or, you know, certainly highly confident students, let me say that. And we, we see them shine time and again. But I was totally struck by one of the young ladies that delivered a speech, and it was a very personal message that she shared. She had moved to Monmouth County and Howell Township when she was about to enter middle school. She was in a small, private school, predominantly similar nationalities attended the school based on where they lived. And when she arrived here, she was panicked about the size of the school and the diversity within the school, not everyone looking alike, right? Just naturally, there's so many different nationalities and individuals that make up our student body, which I believe is a great strength. But she talked about her experience and how quickly she learned as a sixth grader that this was a school about us, that this was a school where the peers, the students, were going to be accepting. Certainly, it wasn't without conflict. She was clear to say that. But certainly, that the environment in which she found herself was so much richer than where she had been in a very isolated environment. But it rung very loud to me about all the work that this Board and this administration has been focusing on in terms of culture-building, environment-developing, so that students do feel safe and comfortable in their environment. And here's a young lady that couldn't have been at a more disadvantage in her own mind, obviously not, but in her own perception when she arrived here. And for her to flourish and to, the both speeches were just so articulate. I know Ms. Okerson speaks each time that she hears our young, our young folks present and the, and the confidence in which they do so, and the natural nature in which they do. And I so happen to agree greatly with you, Ms. Okerson, and I'm extremely proud. And I know that in speaking to Mrs. Callender and Mr. Preston and, and Mr. Miller so far about the graduation at South, it also had that, that common theme of the students shining. And really, that's what it is. It's a middle school moving-up ceremony. Let's not get too dramatic. It's a graduation from our district, but certainly, it's, it's not a high school and certainly not a college graduation. But we make it important because we do recognize the accomplishments of the students and the community that Mr. Bon Giovanni spoke of, that we curate here for our children and for our staff to flourish. And I just thought it was beautiful and worth taking a few minutes to celebrate that. I believe the President now is going to make a statement in the middle of my report.
Staff is so amazing. Three hours before that ceremony, it was pouring out. The fact that with the uncertainty of the weather, that they were able to pull it together so quickly was really a testament. So, please know this Board is really appreciative of what the staff did to get.
Yes, and it was a collaborative effort. It was the B&amp;G folks, the maintenance folks, right? It was the teachers, it was the administration and the support staff. And I think it was also noteworthy that while graduation's not a requirement contractually, it was quite impressive to see the number of folks that I witnessed at North and spending a few minutes in this room with the students and staff before they led themselves out to, to, to the graduation. It was just such a happy moment, and to see so many staff members present for our kids speaks volumes to the individuals that, that we continue to employ and support, and their support of the children was certainly on display. So, a big thank you to our entire faculty that came out and staff that came out to make it a special evening, so. And thank you to all the Board who was able, I know the date changed, threw some monkey wrenches in for some individuals, and I know Ms. Malley was fresh out of surgery and found herself compelled to get there, right? So, thank you all for making it a special evening for our students and for their families, and hopefully for you. I know it's an important evening as you look at your Boardsmanship and the work you do. So, so I wanted to just take a moment to discuss graduation because I felt it was that important. Certainly wonderful culminating activities throughout the district and the primary schools and the three-five schools as well. One noteworthy event that took place since we last met was the dedication or ribbon-cutting of the little free public libraries that were an outgrowth of last year's HDF, the Foundation's grant, the Bill O'Brien grant. And we had a ribbon-cutting at Countryside, Mr. Sanisak?
Yes.
And, and there's a second one over at Deer Park.
Deerwood.
Deerwood Park. And there was, to my pleasure, a Cub Scout, a Boy Scout, I apologize for his Eagle Scout project, built two libraries, and there's now one at Taunton, and there's also one at Greenville. So, I think that gets us up to at least six that I can count that our school community has put into this development, into this, these, you know, Howell Township. And before Mr. Sanisak was able to attend Saturday, and he was sharing, before they rolled off the property, there were kids already putting books in and taking books out. So, we are bringing literature to kids in many different ways, and I think that work, while it's a feel-good thing, it's also good work.
The food trucks are at the, the one over on North American Drive?
As we speak.
As we speak.
Yeah, so, the manager or the owner of that development is doing like a street fair in celebration of the community, but highlighting that, the little free library that's there. So, it's, as we, that's right, because we said we maybe will get over, get out of the Board meeting, get over there. There's a food truck after all.
Mr. Isola.
Yes.
Along those lines, at least I know in the couple of schools that we're involved in, they do the thing where the kids bring in used books, and then they exchange them with their friends, too. So, if you bring in three, then you can take home three. And I couldn't believe, and I saw it on Twitter, too, the amount of books that were donated, the amount of kids that participated. So, that's really cool, too.
Yeah, that's really cool. And let me tell you what else is cool, since we're talking about cool. We do it online, a digital, a digital, a digital book club over the summer. We promote reading to, present the summers, prevent the summer slide. We have, at the, by the last day of school, over 1,000 students enrolled in our digital book club over the summer. Pretty cool. It was born from a small idea that we did a couple of years ago. Each year, it gets bigger and bigger, and it's quite a testament to the work that's happening within our literacy programs, that students are looking for avenues to keep reading for pleasure on their own. It's quite, quite a testament to the work that's happening, again, under the support of this Board. So, thank you for that. Today was a very special day for one Ms. Claire Angle, mostly because she finished the workload of submitting the Future Ready Silver with Distinction submission at some point today. What time, Claire? Five something. She hit send. I got the text. And we are officially submitted for the next tier of recognition in New Jer, in the state's Future Ready program through NJIT and New Jersey School Boards and the Department, obviously. So, we're excited, and we're awaiting that process, I think, by September. We should start to hear the results of that. We are, you know, very confident that we are, you know, in good position to receive such distinction. But, you know, you have to go through the evaluation process, and I want to thank Ms. Angle for her work in that area, along with all her building partners and the folks in Central Office that helped make that possible. It is a massive, massive workload and, you know, lift. And, you know, Claire, as usual, does those things effortlessly, without a complaint, and she finds herself in a position to continue to do all the other things that are required of her role. So, I wanted to take a moment to recognize her leadership in that area and thank her for the work she's doing in spearheading that effort for us. So, thank you, Claire, and we'll keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully, in October, at the School Boards Conference, we'll be celebrating Silver with Distinction recognition. So, I look really with great hope for that to happen. Also worthy to mention that the TSA students are off to Nationals. And when are they competing, Ms. Angle? So, by, during this weekend, they'll be, you know, competing. We're hopeful to get good news. As you know, our kids have generally done very well in this competition. So, again, we send them with fantastic confidence, and hopefully, in our July meeting, we'll have some results to report out on the fine things that are happening there. As you all know, we are continuing to partner with the Monmouth County, the Monmouth County Schools Partnership for Wellness. That's the group that was born from a concept that we wanted to get countywide resources together and work with that. That's going to be October 3rd, just to keep the Board updated. July 11th, I'll be hosting the Steering Committee again in our administrative building, and that's when we'll finalize the surveys to be pushed out to parents and community members, as well as educators and hopefully students, to get feedback, so then we can start to solicit presentations and keynote speakers. We've already looked into, Mrs. Callender, maybe you can help me, Michelle, who we saw speak, Rhubar, what's her last name? You remember? I apologize for not knowing this particular speaker's name. Mrs. Callender and I had an opportunity to see her speak down at the Leadership, Spring Leadership Conference. She was really dynamic. Ms. Angle, of course, was with us as well. And, you know, I'm actually reading her book called Unselfie. I really should be finished with it by now, but the end of the school year distracted me, so I got to pick it up again. But she wasn't available. In addition to that, we reached out to Mallory's Army. Colts Neck is one of our partners in this work. They had Mallory's Army in. They were really pleased with the presentation by, I believe, Ms. Grossman, Mallory's mom. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, they're not available. So on the 11th, we'll continue to grapple with who the keynote should be. We want it to be broad to cover the entire spectrum of needs, right? So when we talk about wellness, it's a whole gamut of issues that kids are facing. Students are coming to schools with anxieties. We've talked about this. There's substance, there's bullying, there's depression. There are so many factors that go into an individual's wellness. So we want to make sure that we're getting a good, you know, broad opportunity for folks to see and hear from experts in the field on the topics that are most dear to them and in need of their concerns. Tomorrow, we will, some years ago, we started doing what we call the Summer Administrative Retreat. Our administrative team gets together, the vice principals, principals, supervisory staff, directors, assistant sups and soup. We get together and we work together, kind of like our board retreat. We do that surrounding different topics. And we've been doing that, I guess, for about eight years now. Tomorrow, we'll be doing that right here at Middle School North. And I look forward to that great day. And just so that, the reason why I highlight that is because it speaks to the commitment of leadership's acknowledgement that we too are part of the learning team. And we want to continue to do that work and model good practices for our staff, for our board and for our community. So I'm excited. You know, today we had our regular leadership meeting where it's, you know, work-related in terms of topics and things of that nature. Tomorrow's administrative retreat where we'll actually get to partner on some projects and do some really interesting things in terms of getting to know each other a little better and work together and all those things. So it's always wonderful when we have the opportunity to be learners. And I look forward to that tomorrow and I wanted to share that with the board. Mr. Preston, we'll send around this month's report of suspensions throughout our school district. Nineteen suspensions this reporting period, eighteen out and one in. That report is coming around. Now, I've asked Mr. Delancey to join us this evening. I know that Jared Delancey was at our last education meeting. And Dr. Lowe, our Chair of Education and the Education Committee, had the opportunity to see the presentation on Effective School Solutions. Also was discussed at Finance. And we have discussed that here at the dais to some level. And I know that Dr. Lowe also included that in her brief last meeting. Effective School Solutions, what the work they do is very focused on intensive therapeutic care for students and their families. So, you know, when we want, when we want to say, you know, what's the why? Why do we want to get engaged into a contract with a vendor on certain work? Jared will present to us in just a moment the why and from a global perspective. But we do a great job here and I want the board to recognize this. I want to front-load this information for the Board of Education and for our guests this evening. We do a fantastic job on servicing our students. We have many programs, such as our artistic program, our behavioral program, so many programs where we keep a lot of our students in the least restrictive environment here in district. That's our goal. It's not always possible. There are times where a child's need is unique, different, or is in need of more intensive services. And sometimes while we have a very low, very proud to say, a very low out-of-district placement on the Mrs. Callender's work in the Department of People's Services, we've been able to, some years ago, we did a big push to get some retention back for students that were out. But we've been able to maintain very low numbers of out-of-district students. However, we still have kids out of district and we still look at kids who are in need of intensive support. So I'm going to ask that Jared take a moment to introduce himself and then the program. And tonight, we'll have the opportunity to discuss that and ask questions of the representative here this evening from Effective School Solutions. And I think we can hopefully grapple with that a little bit and talk through what that could mean for our school district, because I think it could be very beneficial.
Can you guys hear me clearly? Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thank you all for having me this evening. I appreciate your attention and your time. I couldn't think of a more important topic to be discussing with you than your students' mental health, overall well-being. A quick note about myself and how I came into this position and why I joined the Effective School Solutions team. I taught years ago in the South Bronx. I taught middle school. And that was daunting in many ways, also very beautiful in other ways. But one of the ways it was daunting was not the academics, but facing students who clearly had challenges, emotional and behavioral challenges, that I had no idea how to address. And that stuck with me. It lent itself to the work I did following teaching, which was clinical work. I got my LCSW, which is a clinical license to have private practice, and worked with students, largely students, teenagers with emotional and behavioral challenges. And I also saw the need from that end. Students in a school environment where there is an opportunity to support them, students with higher-level emotional and behavioral challenges, but a real challenge for doing that in the school world. So when I first heard about the mission of Effective School Solutions, it really resonated with me based on that prior experience. I could talk about this topic all night. You don't have all night. I'm going to be as concise as I can be while getting the point across. And then we'll have some time for Q and A after I make that presentation. The mission of ESS is to provide a high level of comprehensive and cost-effective, fully clinical programs embedded in the school day for students K through 12 with emotional and behavioral challenges. Whether or not those students are classified is an important point, so that those students can be supported in the least restrictive environment, as Joe mentioned, and benefit from everything a district like Howell has to offer. That's the true spirit of ESS. We started in two districts, two very different districts, I'm sure you'll agree, Booton and Cherry Hill, New Jersey, ten years ago. This is our 10th anniversary. Ten years, ninth anniversary. And we're in both of those districts to this day. And in each of those districts, we're working with students on all three levels, elementary, middle and high school. And we've added now, so we're in 48 districts in total and 89 schools. And I think there are two reasons we've expanded as rapidly as we have. One is the need, which I'll talk about briefly on a national landscape, and then our ability to address that need effectively. In terms of the mental health landscape on a national level, I attend conferences, national conferences, all over the country. And there is a consensus, I can say that flat out, as to the uptick in the incidence and severity of students with emotional and behavioral challenges. Everyone agrees on that, particularly folks who have been in the educational system for many years. They've seen that change, that uptick. There is not a consensus as to why that uptick has happened. People talk about social media. They talk about the family structure. Talk about unprecedented academic pressures on students. And I'm sure it's all of those things, but that's a longer discussion. The need is there and that's for certain. The one statistic that I tend to point out is that 10-years statistic. 10 years in between the onset of symptoms, when young people start to feel challenges and have issues, and then getting services when an intervention happens. 10 years. So what we're looking to do is to intervene early and often. Data is a big part of what we do. I mentioned that we've been as successful as we've been because we have used this program to support students in district. We have the numbers to back that up. The founders of ESS knew that boards of education, superintendents, business administrators would need hard evidence that this program is working. So this is aggregate data from last year's program, working with 1,506 students in the districts we were in. We track for every single student that we work with, the impact of ESS on their grades, on their attendance and on their discipline. We also tailor, and I'll talk about what we do specifically for districts, specific districts that we work with, we also tailor some of that data. Districts have asked us to measure, for example, nurses' visits, which is often a big sign of how much support students are getting or not getting. The students, we've all seen that model of, or that phenomenon of students being in the nurse's office all day. So we've looked at that too. And we also measure urgent interventions, which is our response. I'll tell you who we are in the building. But our response to students decompensating or, in layman's terms, melting down throughout the day. That's a big part of what we do. So this is the aggregate data that we keep. But we also present this data to each partner district that we have. We call that the ESS report card. And we do that at different times throughout the year, so you can see the impact of the program on your students in particular. One of the numbers that I'd like to emphasize there that we're quite proud of is that 98% retention rate. So of those 1,506 students, 98% maintain safely and successfully in district. Some more data. We also look to bring students back when we can, when that's feasible. We will work with districts to talk to families, to see if there's an opportunity to bring students back and support them again, so that they can benefit from everything that a township, a district like Howell has to offer. We've been very successful in that as well. 94% last year came back and were able to stay. It stuck. We also bring a lot of students back from home instruction. I'm sure you're familiar with that phenomenon as well. A lot of students with school avoidance and anxiety who go out and tend to not come That's hard objective data. Of course, we also ask our parents how they think we're doing. We give them these questions every year. Part of their survey, we present it to the district. Perhaps the question that goes right to the heart of the matter is number three, is this program helping my child? Last year, 100%. 100% of the families that we worked with either agreed or strongly agreed with all of those questions. Confidentiality. Do you feel like you're being respected with this program? Are you being informed, et cetera? So that's just as important in my mind as the hard data. Just some quotes from families. So how are we doing this year after year? This is the part that's quite involved, particularly if we take a deeper dive into the clinical piece. But just to give you an overview of four areas, the four pillars really of why we're successful, I believe, in doing what we're doing. The first part is the program. What does the program look like? We have built into the structured program several contacts every day. Our students are getting group therapy, they're getting individual therapy, they're getting family therapy. And that, nothing more important than the family piece. Often, it's a real challenge, not always, but often it's a real challenge for the districts to get families to participate in this aspect of their students' experience in district. We have a very high participation rate in family therapy. And if you think about it from the family's perspective, from their point of view, they're getting all of these services for free, embedded right in the school, located conveniently for them. No one is asking them to find a practitioner out in the community and to either use their healthcare or to come out of pocket to pay for that provider. So this is all very helpful to them and they tend to be quite appreciative in that way. But it's also the relationships that we're developing with them. Not only are we doing the family, family therapy, but we're also doing a family support group, which is a once-a-month, once-a-month meeting where the families come together and support one another in a sense of solidarity around being involved in this program. There's a psychoeducation piece, there's always food in these get-togethers. When we're in a district for some time, it's really nice that the alumni families come back and speak. So we send a newsletter to the families as well, all of this support. But the relationship, I think, is key. Our clinicians are typically on the phones with families every day. So this interaction is happening all the time. The rapport tends to be quite strong. In addition to the structured program, I alluded to it earlier, just as important as what's built in, is what we're doing in a crisis situation, the urgent interventions. So when our students, they're not in group therapy with us, or in an individual session or in family therapy, maybe they're in math or they're in English and they have some kind of meltdown, we get that call. We're responding to that call, not the guidance counselor or a school social worker who has a larger cohort to deal with. Bandwidth is a real issue in school districts, we understand that. Or the nurse, for example, as I mentioned earlier, we get that call. We're looking to de-escalate and have that child back in class as quickly as possible. That might not be possible and we're following up in that way when it isn't. Whether that's an assessment that needs to be done, being in contact with the families and always in lockstep communication with the school team as well. So that's just as important as the structured piece, the urgent interventions. We also have an extended school year, a summer program to maintain the progress we've made with our students over the year. That's important as well. You don't want to lose that progress. But who's doing this? Who's administering the program? Who's providing the services? In the standard model, the standard ESS model, it's a four-person team. There are two licensed mental health professionals who are coming, this is very important as well, coming from psychiatric settings. We're always recruiting licensed mental health professionals who have at least three years of experience outside of graduate work before we'll even interview them. But they're not coming from the school world. This is distinguishing the work that is done in the school world with school social workers and the parameters of school social work. This is a fully clinical model. So we're looking for clinicians who are not only familiar with the milieu here in the district like Howell, but we're looking for folks who've been dealing with, so to speak, the heavy hitters, students with a very high level of need day in and day out. We want them to be familiar with that and to come into your district fully prepared. So they're carrying the caseload. It's a caseload of 20 students, each carrying a caseload of 10. Again, it's that relatively smaller group of students who are taking up the outsized portion of your child study team's time and your guidance counselors and your principal and whomever. So we're looking to take that primary responsibility off their shoulders, so they can spread the wealth, so to speak, to the broader student community. Those are the first two people on the team. The third person on the team is what we call the regional clinical director. That's in effect like your own executive clinical director. They're going to be providing the overarching leadership and supervision of the program and clinical supervision for our clinical team, those two licensed mental health professionals. Even with all the experience they have, we want them to get ongoing clinical supervision. That regional clinical director also facilitates meetings, we call them administrative meetings. They're like medical rounds, where we're going to be discussing every single student that's in ESS clinically and academically with your team, so we're all on the same page. That person will also facilitate meetings with the school principal, with the superintendent, going over things like the ESS report card and all of the data. So that communication is there with school leadership and district leadership. We have to have communication with school and district leadership to be successful and we know that. The fourth person on the team is a dedicated quality and risk management person. That person is remote. They're going to be hooked into your student information system. What do you, I forget what you guys have here, is it Power School? Was I right? Okay. So we're going to be, that's how we collect the data. That person's going to be collecting data on our students only in terms of grades, attendance, discipline. That person is also fully clinical in the way that I described our clinicians' background. That person will be reviewing the clinical charts, just like any other psychiatric program. We have detailed clinical charts where all of the clinical interventions are logged. We want districts to be reassured, there are multiple sets of clinical eyes on those charts. Are there any red flags you want to dig deeper on? Are our clinicians following our protocols? We have specific protocols for how we want these services delivered. So that's what that fourth person does. And that's the four-person team. There are other responsibilities, those are the primary responsibilities. Next, I mentioned I was a teacher. For me, there's nothing more crucial to our success than the work we do with teachers. In addition to the daily work of consulting and collaborating, sitting in in classrooms if a teacher would like us to do that and the school principal approves, we have built-in an all-day off-site professional development day in the fall. This year, it was on creating trauma-attuned classrooms. And it was very popular. It was how do teachers learn how to avoid, and I know I did this, inadvertently triggering students? How do you get a better appreciation of the trauma a lot of our students are coming to school with? And how do you develop skills for addressing that? That was our all-day off-site. We're also building in professional development days within your professional development schedule. Our biggest challenge is how tight your PD schedule is. But we're looking to get our PD in there early and often, as often as you'll let us, in terms of students flying under the radar. That was another challenge when I was teaching. There are some students, it's obvious that that student needs help. There are others, it's not so obvious, but you know they're there. So what are some of the signs that clinical folks get training on, but teachers do not? Executive functioning deficits, positive behavioral supports. So we're looking to build this into your PD system as well. Teachers tend to really appreciate that, not only for the content, but they get the message from the district, that the district has brought this program in to support them as well. To be clear, this is not just the teachers working with ESS students. I'm often asked, okay, it's straightforward, the spirit of this ESS model, you want to work with those students with the highest level of need. There are other students who need help that might not rise to that level of need. What can you do for them? A big part of that, in my answer, is professional development. We're doing professional development for the whole district, so that teachers who may not have an ESS student ever can still bring the skills that they're learning in PD to the students that they're working with. And that's a great way to cast the net wider. So that's working with the teachers. And then finally- for the whole district, so that teachers who may not have an ESS student ever can still bring the skills that they're learning in PD to the students that they're working with. And that's a great way to cast the net wider. So that's working with the teachers. And then finally, I touched on it already. Our relationships with school and district leadership are crucial to our success, so we have built-in those administrative meetings, the meetings with the principal, the meeting with the superintendent. We're constantly interacting with the director of special services or pupil services to make sure that those lines of communication are open, not just randomly as things come up during the day, but built-in, crucial part of what we're doing. So all of those things together, the licensed mental health professionals with that experience, but not just leaving them on their own with that experience, embedding them in a program that's now proven over 10 years and data-backed, giving them protocols as to the specific ways to deliver these services, and giving them the clinical supervision that they need to be supported in an environment that's very difficult, and scrutinizing their work. They know that they've got their work cut out for them. From their first interview with ESS, they know that not only is the district going to be looking at their work closely, but ESS has a designated person looking at their work, looking at the clinical charts, et cetera, that quality and risk management person, so they're being scrutinized. And then add to that the objective data that we're providing the district throughout the year, and I think that's really been the formula for success over this past decade. It makes us confident that we can do the same for you. Again, I just want to thank you for your time, and open the floor up to some questions.
If I may, sir, just, maybe I missed it. I've heard you, we've spoken quite a bit over the last couple of months. Did you break down what a typical day would look like for a student in terms of number of contacts with the morning and the lunch program?
Sure.
If you can just walk through that, I think that will help emphasize or enlighten the intensity of the work.
Absolutely. We are looking to, as Joe said, build this structure into every day. A typical day has three structured points of contact. One is group therapy every morning. So the students are coming in to what I like to refer to as a soft landing, students with anxiety, students who are coming in dysregulated. They're meeting with the familiar faces of our clinicians who are welcoming them every morning. That relationship, that rapport develops. They're getting stabilized in group therapy, and then sent out for a successful day. All of that work in the morning is to set them up for a successful day. A lot of our students tend to struggle with the unstructured time of lunch, so we like to have, and we always work with the school principal on how to tailor this, how the school principal thinks it's best tailored. But we like to have our kids sit with our clinicians at lunchtime as well. We have a designated, I didn't mention that either, a designated ESS space in the building, a safe space. We bring in the, now it's plastic plants, because the live plants were dying, but the plants, the paintings, the carpeting, the leather sofas. We're making this a true therapeutic safe space. Sometimes the teachers try to come and hang out in that room. We have to kick them out. But we want the students to feel safe and supported. That's the space they're coming into every morning. That's the space they would return to for lunch. Sometimes the school principal wants to make that optional. We have a point-level system. Some principals say, let them earn their way out of that lunch, but it's up to you. And then at the end of the day, we have an academically focused class that we call learning strategies. This is all the standard model, because we're very focused, as you can see, on a student's academic success as well. A district educator will teach that class, and one of our clinicians sits in for our students. That might be an opportunity if a student's having a rough day, to pull them out of that class and do a session. But very focused, a lot of that is executive functioning, et cetera. That's every day. In addition to that, once a week, we're doing individual sessions at a minimum of once a week, built-in. Some of our students are in crisis. They need us to do an individual session every day. But at least once a week, and family therapy is every other week, built-in. Our clinicians will stay in the evenings, one evening per week, to meet with families who can't or won't come during the day. Our clinicians often come before school starts to meet with families for whom that's most convenient. Families get the message early on that our clinicians are bending over backwards to get them involved. And students, parents do sign consents to be a part of this program, and part of that consent is, we need you to participate. The district is going to be doing everything it can to help your child, but we need you involved in this process. So that message comes across early and often. The other structured piece is an extended school year piece as well, and also the family support program that I mentioned. That's once a month.
Jared, it's a great presentation. I'm sure there's going to be some questions from my fellow board members, but I'm going to turn to Dr. Lowe first. This does come out of her committee, so anything that you want to add, or?
No, I think those who are there, it's a very comprehensive program. I think the one thing that-
Yeah, please use the mic.
I'm sorry. Forgot about that. It's a very comprehensive program, and we did have a chance to preview it. And I think the one key takeaway, several, is that we do have great counselors and support staff. And, you know, as I've worked in schools across the country, this is very specific. The need that's there and the growing need that's happening all over our country, it does take a clinician to do it. So that was the thing, the big takeaway, that, you know, it's no, not replacing our counselors or our support staff that are trained to do a different work. This is really different.
I appreciate that, Dr. Lowe, because, to be clear, we're not there to supplant any roles. This is separate from school social work. This is fully clinical. This is, we're there to supplant the work that they're doing and to support them fully in that work.
In addition to, you didn't say it, but it's important, because that question may come up. You do not take, the CSC is still the CSC. So, you know, we're not, this is something that the CSC is still governing, or, I'm not saying it right. In other words, Patty, you remember, we talked about that. It was a question that came up at committee, that this doesn't replace the child study team.
Absolutely right.
Working with them, but certainly not to replace them.
Absolutely correct. And it's not to say in any way that there aren't talented, committed, and often, fully clinically licensed folks in district, who may even have a private practice outside a district. This is responding to the fact that the parameters of school social work are such that the clinical work they can do in the building is limited. And in addition to that, the bandwidth, the number of students they need to support.
Anybody else?
Hi.
I, Ms. Mallie. You mentioned about children that are out of the schools. What is your approach to getting them back? If they're that, so much anxiety, they won't even get on the bus, and the parents can't even get them to the building.
Let me just clarify, Ms. Mallie. Are you talking about students who are struggling to come here, or students who are placed out of district?
No, students that were-
Struggling to come in every day.
Yeah, coming into the building, or-
Yeah, got it. I just wanted to make sure we-
They were students here, and now they're not even coming to school anymore.
I could tell you that, and of course, Mr. Delancey will answer this, but we had the opportunity to visit Manawha Aberdeen School District, where they have this in the middle school and the high school, and we had the opportunity to meet two young students, two middle school students. That was just a phenomenal experience. One of them was celebrating, I believe it was her 76th straight day coming to school after missing, paraphrasing here, but in excess of 100 days the previous year.
Okay.
And her statement to me couldn't have been clearer. It's because, and she pointed to the social worker that she was working with, it's because of her. Now, how that happened, let's find out.
Okay.
But I could tell you that I saw evidence of it.
Yeah, that's, that was a good preface. Absolutely. The school of, I mentioned the word protocol. Protocol is really a key word, an operative word in the ESS model. One of the protocols is around school avoidance. That protocol involves an assessment, it's a lengthy assessment, usually takes about two hours, of sitting with the family and the student, together and separately, to uncover what is driving that school avoidance. Sometimes it's an enmeshed relationship with the parents. Sometimes there's some enabling going on. We want to uncover the reasons as best we can, so that the family therapy can address those reasons, and what's happening there. Then we also recognize that students, many of whom, as you were saying, have been out for quite some time, they're not going to just come right back in the next day to the building, even with a team in place. So we have a transition plan. The first few days they're back with us, or they're back in the building, they may be with us for the entire day, just getting a feel of the building. Then maybe in between every class, they're visiting with us, checking in. It gives them that sense of safety and support that makes a huge difference in that transition back, because we need that to stick, obviously. So filling that safe space and then developing that rapport, remember, they're seeing our clinicians built-in three times a day, right? And then they're seeing us with their families. That relationship that Joe spoke to, that that young student mentioned and pointed to, as to why she was having the success she was having, that's the key. That's where the rubber meets the road. It's those relationships that we're able to establish. And the frequency of contact helps develop that rapport.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is that something that the district would reach out to the family, or is this on the parents or the family unit to reach out to the district for this service, to start getting the child back in?
To start, we're working with your team to have an initial cohort. Typically, that will not be the full 20-student cohort. You want to leave slots open. And by the way, let me just mention quickly, that we're always looking to step students down and out of ESS. Get them stabilized and into the least restrictive environment. That's always the goal. So in those administrative meetings, those weekly administrative meetings, and also outside of them, but formally in those meetings, we're talking about who's ready to step down, so that slots are opening up, and who's in the queue, because you're going to get referrals from teachers, et cetera. I think this student could benefit from ESS, so we're constantly talking about that as well now. So you'll have an original cohort that your team, the district, has communicated to families about this program, and we think your child could really benefit. You have that cohort, and then it evolves as you have, throughout the year, as you have students stepping down and other students being referred. Sure.
And in addition, I know through our conversations and Mr. Sannasack and I's review of the draft contract, we were pretty clear about the wording on this, based on our communications, that the ESS workers will actually go to the homes. Not as a regular practice, but when needed, they will find themselves in the homes to help encourage, combat perhaps school phobia, or whatever the issue may be.
Yes. That's actually part of the school avoidance protocol. Thank you. I neglected to mention that, that part of that protocol also is, every third absence, our clinicians are triggered to go to the home, which is a huge part of, not only what drives the success with school avoidance students, but the reduction in absences that you saw on that one slide. Not all of our students are school avoidant, but a lot of them are. So that's a huge part of it. Thanks, Joe.
So with the, when you just said that the third absence is true, that's only for the 20 kids that are in part of the program. It's not anyone?
That's right. To be clear, if we go, our studies early on, time studies about what the cohort size could be before this model would break down, and we'd be running into the same issues your team runs into, early on, it was 18, and then we bumped it up. As you can imagine, districts are saying, we got one more. Can you work with one more? And we want to say yes. So we have bumped that number up.
So, excuse me, I have a question about stigma. If the students, if the members of the cohort leave for lunch and go eat somewhere else, is there any type of stigma that gets attached by the other kids to the cohort members?
That's a great question. I would say the majority of districts that we're in don't even have any kind of identifying sign or symbol or verbiage outside of the ESS space, that it's ESS, just looks like another classroom. One of the biggest compliments we get, and this happens often, I'm happy to say, is when a student will bring a fellow student and say, she needs ESS, or he needs ESS. They actually feel proud of the work that they're doing to improve them, like this student that Joe met and that the team met who visited. They tend to feel empowered and proud of themselves. And many of them, who then step down from the program, come back as like an honored alumni and talk about it. So mental health stigma is a big issue, and one that I'm really glad you're bringing up. But what we find is actually the opposite. First of all, we do our best to not broadcast any of this, but then students do tend to feel really good about the progress they're making.
Also, we have, we have a lot of students that don't necessarily eat in the cafeteria. There are students that go back and have lunch with their teachers, students that may go have lunch in the media center, students that go and have lunch in the child study team office, based on their needs and level of comfort. So that happens often, so there, it isn't like so-and-so's not at lunch. Where are they? There are a lot of students that opt to eat in other areas, based on teacher availability and all of that, so.
Mr. Kerman?
Yes. You mentioned often that there's a 10-year delay from the time there's an onset of the problem, and that perhaps sort of treatment is followed up on that. I guess I'm curious, with all the data you now have from all your schools, between the elementary schools, the middle schools, and you say you serve as high schools as well, how many of your students that you take care of are students who are in the earlier grades? So that's part one. But part two, do you find with the earlier intervention that you're more successful in treating it more quickly and more effectively?
Yes. On the one hand, it's sad for me to report that our most robust area of growth is elementary school. We're getting more and more reports of younger and younger students with more severe issues, and very often acting out, not acting in, behavioral. So we're doing a lot of work there, and on that, in that way, that's, you know, that's a sad thing to report and to acknowledge. On the other hand, it is working. The earlier we're intervening with students, the more impactful we can be. And so in districts, for example, in Monmouth County, we're not only in Manawha Aberdeen, but we're in Freehold and Manalapan High School. We're in Middletown, and we're in Neptune as well. In Neptune, we're in all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. And the work we're doing with students at the elementary level is to, to do the best we can in making sure they don't need it in middle school and high school. And we've had great success with that. I mean, it's still early on, so longitudinal data, you know, is forthcoming, but I think it's very effective.
Anyone else?
I love the structure that you were explaining about how you're working with the students, as soon as they're in the school and they're working in the group therapy, and then that suddenly sets the tone for their day. And also, the fact that you're bringing the families in, which is a crucial part, where I think the schools, districts struggle with, because sometimes the parents are angry with the school, or labeling, or whatever it is, that that portion of it is huge. And if you can get that going, I think that's great, that you can, you know, incorporate that in their day. But I did have a question about the, I was like, okay. When you're talking about the out-of-district students, now how do you approach that? Like, if you're going to, you're approaching the families, the school districts approaching the families, I'm confused on how that works. How are you trying to get them back, and how are you able to analyze what program they're in versus what we have here?
So if we go that route with districts, we have a fairly streamlined process, as you can imagine, of how we go about it. The first step is to have the person in the district with the best relationship with that family, whose student is out of district, to approach them. We have a script that we give that person to describe the program. Very often, not all the time, but very often, there are families who would love to come back if they felt like there was a program in place, didn't want to leave to begin with. That's an easier pitch, so to speak. But for those families who still resist, we then meet with those families with the district, and do something similar to what I'm doing now. We want to make it abundantly clear to those families that your child will be coming back to a very different situation, clinical situation, than he or she was facing when they were here. And that goes a long way, not only with the content, but putting a face to the name. And so we're very successful in that as well.
Yeah, I think having the clinical aspect of it, you know, versus the teacher's aspect, because the teachers are, and child study teams are overwhelmed with all these needs, having a clinical person coming in and seeing it from a different view is always a benefit.
Those administrative meetings that I mentioned are so important for so many reasons. But one of them is, that's where we really develop that rapport with the child study team. They learn that they can rely on us. They learn to trust us. They learn that our clinicians are committed, dedicated professionals who want to support them in their work, and a lot of that happens in those administrative meetings.
Mr. Thor.
I'm very impressed with the entire presentation, the whole concept. The question I had is, how have you worked collaboratively over the years with existing behavioral programs that might have pre-existed CSS coming aboard?
Programs that the district has implemented on their own, yes. So that's crucial, and thank you for your question. What we're looking to do is to be that, so to speak, that third-tier program, so that when the other programs, and Joe mentioned, you've got an abundance of them here, effective programs already in place, when they aren't working, they don't, they're not enough, they don't suffice, then they can step into the ESS program. It works really, in a nutshell, along a continuum of care. So that student has gone through that continuum of what the district already had in place, then they can step into ESS and vice versa, step down from ESS back into the systems that you have in place. And that works quite well, to fill that gap of that highest level of need.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have to thank Ms. Mangano. You asked my question, so it saved me from having to ask it. I just have a couple of comments, really.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mangano.
Let it go. Just a couple of comments. One is, I love the fact that you do an extended summer program also. I think, you know, we hear all too often that, you know, programs and, was that from me? Was that from me?
Your time's up.
I think that was from- I think that was from. Too often you hear, well, you know, what happens during the summer? People fall back, so it's great that there's a summer piece there. You, when you showed the slide with what you referred to as a report card, and you pointed to number three, the one that I really liked there is, was actually the bottom one, 100% with it, that, the one before that. Nope. Go back, go back two more.
Oh, two more? Before the note, so the other way, right?
Advance, advance, advance. Okay. This program in helping me cope with my child, the bottom one, I think that's a really great statement, that the families have said, you know, this is helping, you know, so we're not talking about just the school setting. We're talking about how it, how it affects the family as a whole. So, I, that one really caught my eye. The other piece in, it just kind of strikes me, I think where this benefits the entire school community is that, and thankfully, I don't think, I don't believe we have any children who are so completely disrupted that we think of them as a danger. But for that child who shows some borderline stuff, I think where it helps the entire school community is the feeling a little bit safer. If I'm a staff member, and I know that I have Tommy in class, but I also know that you've been dealing with Tommy three times a day, trying to build up things, it helps me as a staff member in able to do my job. And I would also think that, you know, for the two other students who were in that class who know that Tommy's got a couple of issues, you know, they're, yes, they're, the stigma in terms of how do we identify, but let's be honest, people find out what people find out. I think it helps the community in knowing that there's a program like this in place to help students feel a little bit safer also, and students can perform better, can learn better when they feel safe. So, for all of those reasons, I agree with Mr. Thor. I think this is a great presentation. I'm sure there's a lot more conversation we could have about it. I see you going like this.
I just had one other question, just, you know, I always think about the financial element, and I think this is a program that is needed. We also know that anytime we have students that's out of district, there's a cost element to that, and it does impact the bottom line of the district. Would you have any kind of numbers, any kind of stats on your success as a program in bringing some of those out-of-district students back in?
Yes. That pie chart in the middle there is out-of-district returnees. So, of those students that we did bring back to district, and all of the districts we were working with, 94% retention rate, meaning they didn't need to go back out for support. We're very proud of that number. Very often, and I appreciate your question, the amount of services ESS is providing far exceeds what that student was getting out of district. And I think that that's a big part of why we're as successful as we are in bringing them back and maintaining.
And the reason I ask that, I think it's fairly obvious, that, you know, there's going to be a cost to any program. And if we're able to actually not only have a program that clearly benefits our students, but also it pays for itself, it's a win-win.
So, I just want to be clear, Mr. Thor, what was that number, 94%? That's retention once they get them back. What Mr. Delancey, he was not saying that 94% of the students who are placed outside of districts are returning.
Oh, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't misinterpreted, right?
I think it would be interesting to break down, like, long-term, also, how many actual are brought back.
And then, in addition to that, Mr. Thor, it's the avoidance of the next one, right? I think that's a big.
For sure.
Maybe unidentifiable, right? Because there's no crystal ball that student X would definitely end up in a more intensive program outside of our boundaries. But certainly, we know that if we work closely and provide services for families and for students, we have a better chance on developing that right program for them here.
Well said.
Mrs. Callender?
Yeah, we, we have already been looking at some students that, you know, we may be able to bring back. We have to remember, too, that this is for students with certain types of behaviors. It's not for kids with developmental disabilities, cognitive disabilities, et cetera. So, a lot of the students that we have placed out of district are placed for some of those reasons, you know, medically fragile kids, et cetera. But we do have some that had behaviors that were such that we, we couldn't continue to service them appropriately here with the services that we had. So, we have already begun to look at some of those. But I think what's important to also consider is that they, they don't only work with students that have been identified as special education students. So, they will also work with our general education students who are experiencing school avoidance, anxiety, disruptive behaviors, in an effort to keep those students from becoming special education students, which also comes with it a great cost savings, because as soon as you go to the other side, the education becomes that much more expensive. So, and of course, overall, it's, it's what it's doing for the child and the families, right? So, there's always the monetary thing that we have to look at and be cognizant of, of course, because that is, you know, your role, our role, also, always to be respectful of that. But also, to really look at what we are doing for the long run with these children, for these children and their families, to be able to become successful, productive members of their community, of their school community, of their overall community, and move forward in a positive direction. So, you know, we, we have to look at both of those things. But even bringing, you know, having two students that either could possibly come back or not have to go out, when you're looking at the cost of tuition, and then you add the cost of transportation onto that, that you're already, you know, at close to a break-even point. So, we have been looking at all of that. And it gives us the option now. It gives us the option to say, "But we have that here." You know, we, we can work with the students now here with those types of things. And then, like he said, we actually will have probably more than what some of the out-of-district placements have. And right within our community, where parents don't have to go travel to, you know, a, a school that's 60 minutes away in order to meet with the clinicians and the staff and have family therapies, et cetera. It can happen right here, and we're more likely to get the families when it can happen right here. And then, that has an impact on everyone, not only the student, so, it's great.
And if I, I just, I think I, you know, we obviously are going to have to address cost. There's no doubt about that, and we'll get to that, I'm sure, in a moment. I'm sure someone's going to ask that question. However, I think one of the biggest cautions I would, would, in all the optimism in which I'm hearing from the board's questions and from, you know, the deep dive that Mrs. Callender, Ms. Fernandez, myself, Mr. Preston have begun to do with ESS, is it's going, we're going to have, we are going to have to say, and Patty mentioned it, Mrs. Callender mentioned it, this is not going to be a 6,000-student program, right? So, everyone's going to want this for their kids. But again, it is a very specific program that is relatively small, but the impact could be massive. So, it's going, you know, a lot of folks are going to say, "Well, you know, we heard about the program, and we want our kid in it." And, you know, we will certainly look at each and every child, that's for sure. But at the end of the day, it's finding the childs that have, the children that have the, the most appropriate challenges that this therapeutic in-school system could support. So, that's how it's going to be successful, by getting the right candidates into the program, and then working closely with those families and those students, and then hopefully stepping them down. I really thought that was an important piece of the work. Mr. Bonjani, I.
But one of the pieces I heard also was that, you know, there's an effort, not, this isn't, okay, we're going to identify Mark as the, the child who's receiving these services and keep him in the program for effort, forever. The effort is to say, "How do we help Mark so that he can advance out?" Which then opens up a spot should somebody else be identified as needing those services. So, you know, I thought, I think that, I know this came through both education. I also happened to be at finance when it was discussed at finance. Do, do we need to talk about the actual cost? Because we do.
Well, if, if, if we are going to be directed to engage into a contract, which we have a draft contract, I cannot ask the board, I cannot recommend the board to say yes without their knowledge of the cost, obviously.
So, the cost?
So, Mr. Satac, please correct me. I think the draft contract we have is what?
259,091.
So, just shy, 259.
Could you speak it into the mic so we could hear that?
259,091.
So, again, it is a big price tag, but as we have discussed here this evening, the avoidance of two out-of-district placements, the return of a student, you know, you're talking about the impact of three placements, not to mention the other benefits that go with that. And this is close to break-even at that point. I'll give you a, just a, for example, I mean, to add, and you all know this, we spoke about it last night at Community Interactions, Mr. Thor. Out-of-school placements can range between $40,000 and $110,000, depending on where they are, for tuition. And then, you couple that with transportation costs, that's easily could be in excess of $300 a day for every day we transport the kid. So, you could be looking at another $50,000 to $60,000 just in transportation costs.
And those costs happen to be in the backup today for our tuition out. You know, you, so you can just get an idea of what numbers could be just in tuition alone.
So, when you talk about the impact of one or two returns or avoidances, that $260,000 number suddenly isn't so dramatic any longer. While it's a big number to digest, I just want perspective to surround that.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Miller's hand.
And then, we're also thinking about students in gen ed who haven't, whose attendance has been poor. They haven't been in school, they've been hospitalized, they're receiving home instruction, you know, out-of-school instruction with our staff. So, those are all costs, too, that we forget about, but we incur them often. And then, the cost of that child not being in school for so long, that comes at a great cost, too. And it comes at a great cost to all of us down the road when we have students that aren't educated and able to support themselves, so it's.
The other thing I would, I would emphasize just quickly is, and Patty, Patty touched on it, things that we tend to not think about is that most students don't go out for just one year when they're placed out of district. On average, in our experience, maybe three years, if they come back at all. So, those savings compound with each year that they would have been out, that they're not.
Dr. Look.
Oh, I just, you said it was 259,091. Is this a yearly contract?
Yes.
It's, okay.
That would be annual, and it would, it's a professional service contract, so it can only be one year at a time. It would have to be renewed every year.
And I, and I believe it has a provision for the ESY program.
Yes, that does not include, that's the 10 months, not the ESY. There's another $8,000 cost for the ESY.
How much for ESY?
Eight thousand dollars.
Actually, to, to be clear, ESY would be included in that. I want, I'll state that for the record. April 15th, typically, it's April 15th we have as, and we can talk about this more directly if it wasn't clear. I figured you guys, you had scrutinized it so clearly. But that 8,000 would be included. What we do is, it's typically 8,000 as an incentive. If you can imagine, our clinicians, who don't know if they have a job the following year until that contract comes in yearly, we incentivize districts to sign up by April 15th so that our clinicians know they have a job the following year, and then we'll throw that summer program in. And I'm very confident saying that to you right now.
Thank you.
Look.
I just wanted to state, you know, cost certainly is a major factor. I'm a taxpayer as well, but I don't ever want us to think that, and I know you didn't mean it that way, that it pays for itself, because we're dealing with a whole child, and we have a phenomenal school district. So, while I'm so supportive of this program, and I stated it earlier, you actually said it, but we're hearing it so many different ways, that, you know, we aren't trained for this type of work. So, if one or two children are prevented from, and like you say, the issues manifest itself, and some of them, they don't even manifest themselves. Some of these kids, like you say, they may have problems, they may not. So, I think that this is a great conversation to have, but I do think that we really need to look at what we have said and what has been a priority for our superintendent and us as a board, that we want to be able to provide a place and how. And we do have so many successful programs, and I know you didn't mean it that way.
Well, man, we're able to accomplish two goals at once here, because we're able to take care of the well-being of our students, and at the same time, if you think about, you know, how it was, having Mr. Isola broke it down for us, and we're able to retain students, we're accomplishing fiscal responsibility at the same time as maintaining the wellness of our students. So, it's, in that regard, it's a huge win-win.
And I, and I do believe that this is a, a family look also, using your example, and going back to my example, let's, so, so Mark is the issue here. Mark is the, the problem child. But Alan Denise happen to be my brother and sister at home. By help, by helping Mark and giving him the services that he needs, helping the family in terms of the services that they need, how do we, you know, how are we really? Directly, I shouldn't even say directly, indirectly. We're, we're helping Denise and Al also by putting them in a better home situation, family situation, I think, all around. And, you know, there, it affects more than just that one child who is in your services.
I look at it as an overall investment.
Yeah.
And I also see it as, if you're affecting, if that one child's behaviors are affecting them internally, it's not only affecting them internally, it's affecting all their classmates as well.
Right, that's what I said about the safety piece there.
So, the whole class is disrupted.
That's right.
So, everybody's affected by it.
Mr. Germin.
Yeah, I was really going to say what Ms. Mangano pointed out. That means learning can be, you know, better for the other students in the class as well. And again, just to reiterate something that you had mentioned earlier, this will free up perhaps guidance counselors and social workers to be able to put more of their attention on more of the student body, while the needs of many of these students who need more help will also be addressed, which is crucial. So, there's a beneficial effect there, too.
Al, this went through finance, and it was, it was, finance was okay with it, right?
The amount was not discussed to finance. We did not have the amount.
Right, I think we mentioned that we were discussing it at the time. Mr. Isola and I were still discussing it with the principals of ESS, but I wanted to make finance aware, and.
Finance originally was going to.
It was going to come back.
Expect it to come back. It did, they did expect it to come back.
But because of the timing, because of the timing, we mentioned to Mr. Miller, and he suggested, or I'm sorry, we mentioned to both of you, sir, and the suggestion was to bring the, the presentation tonight in lieu of going back to finances, how I understood it.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. But yes, finance did expect it to come back, but we suggest that it come to the full board.
Mr. Thor.
I just had one last question. Do you know we have any numbers on how many of our students are out of district because of behavior? Just like if there's a, some number.
You know, it, it varies. We have looked at certain students, and at this point, we have two to three, oh, sorry. Two to three who could be considered appropriate. One for sure that we have been looking at bringing back, but we need this level of service in order to do so. So, we have to dig deeper into that with our teams and case managers, which we really didn't go to that point yet with them, because we weren't sure if we were going to have this service available. So, yes, we do, we do have some on the radar screen right now, with numbers that are quite high, actually. One in particular that, you know, the, between the tuition and the transportation is well over $100,000, so.
If there are no other, no other questions, I know it's not usual for it to come from this seat, but I'd like to make a motion that we add this to the agenda for passage tonight.
Second that motion.
All in favor? A1 will be, and I will read it in. Approved the professional service contract for Effective School Solutions for the 1920, 2019, 2020 school year in the amount of 259,091 for intensive therapeutic services.
Instead of a roll call, any objections to that?
Do you want to take that as A1?
On the motion to put it on the agenda.
When we do the whole consent, or do you want to take that now, sir?
Just leave it, leave it as part of the consent agenda.
A1, thank you.
Thank you so much. This was a great presentation.
Thanks for your time.
Going back to the original order of the day, sir, it is time for an executive session. If we could have a mover and a seconder? Please note the motion printed in the agenda. The items this evening will be the HIB report, superintendent evaluations, a personnel issue update with a teaching staff member, and an update on the tuition conflict discussed last month. The board is in executive session. Back to the day.
Back to the desk, the board is back in session. Mr. President, with your permission, may we take the minutes? Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Dr. Jeffrey, may I take that around, sir? Mr. Miller. Dr. Jeffrey. Mr. Gurman.
Yes.
Dr. Lo. Wait from the table right now, Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano. Mrs. Okerson. Mr. Thor. Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Yes.
The minutes are approved, six votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record. It is now time for the board, please note the correspondence noted for the record. It is now time for board president comments.
I'll save them for during committee reports.
Okay. It's time for the first public comment, may I, sir?
Please.
Whereas the Haltansia Board of Education determines comments may last forty-five minutes, those comments will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw, and the officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board, Mr. Bon Giovanni, may the floor be open?
Sure.
Seeing none, may the floor be closed?
Please.
Now time for committee updates and liaison reports, sir.
Starting from my left, Mr. Gurman.
I have nothing to report for the policy committee at this point. As far as legislative advocacy, one thing that we've noted is that some of the bills have come out that were connected with the Path to Progress report. And again, we've talked about our concerns about any proposal to try to make this a K-12 district. And one bill in particular we've now seen is Senator Gopel's bill, which calls for the Commissioner of Education to do a study and then within a couple of years actually implement a program to establish K-12 districts. So what we want to do going forward is to gather some of the information to look at what some of the consequences of that type of an approach would be from an administrative and a point of view, and efficiency point of view, from a financial point of view, and of course, in terms of the educational outcome. And we're quite concerned about that. And so we're interested in going forward and preparing some materials, and then to speak to our legislators. One point we've noted is that if you look at the regional high school districts with the seven sending, you know, districts into the Freell Regional High School District, we note that there are four, the four legislative districts include the thirtieth district, where our senator and his two assembly people come from, plus the eleventh district, the twelfth district, and the thirteenth district, all having Monmouth County included. So one of the goals we really would like to do is to make contact certainly with all the county legislators on this issue because there is a connection on that particular issue in particular. So we want to go forward with that and look at a couple of other issues and prepare some information.
Do we have any thoughts on how long it might take to prepare, to gather the information that we'd like to present to them?
Weeks, not months, let me say. I think we could have our prospective bullet list together, the way Mr. Gurman and I spoke about it. We do need to gather some information from the state, so pending us getting that from them, I think our opinion-based but educated opinion bullet list together could be done rather quickly.
So once we do that, just as we did with our assembly person recently, then I think we would try to schedule a meeting, or do you think this would be just in writing?
No, I think we would, I think we would schedule a meeting and present it in the same fashion that we have presented other initiatives to our legislators and/or the sponsoring legislators in the past. In this case, it would be the sponsoring legislator, as Mr. Gurman suggested, but we may want to include our legislators as well, and I guess do a speaking tour, for lack of a better way to put it.
Great. Mr. Thor.
We had our Community Interaction Meeting last night at the Equestria Community in Off-Road Thirty-three. I thought it was a very robust conversation. I personally want to thank the Equestria Community for hosting us. There was a really good turnout last night, so we're all happy to see that. Touching on some of the topics that we discussed last night, it was almost a two-hour meeting. It was, not only was it probably the most engaging community interaction meeting we've had since I've been in the chair spot, there was a lot of questions, there was a lot of, you know, ideas back and forth. Members of the community really wanted to know what was going on and trying to learn a little bit about, you know, why we do things and how we operate. Obviously, one of the big topics of conversation was the budget and state funding, and we kind of explained how our budgeting process works and some of the challenges that we're facing right now and will continue to face as the state funding situation continues to evolve. There was a discussion of the strategic plan. Mr. Bon Giovanni nicely explained that, and we were able to tie in why we do certain things with the budget based on the fact that everything is tied into our strategic plan. And then we had a good conversation on volunteering and mentoring. And Mr. Isola discussed the creation of the Thought Leader Program into the curriculum. And then finally, Mr. Gurman was able to discuss a little bit of the work that the Legislative Advocacy Committee does, kind of the goals behind some of the work that committee does, and encourage members of the community to become involved in either that committee if they had a passion for some of the topics, or some of our other committees that we offer here because of our unique structure of having committees that are half-board members and half-citizen members. So I thought it was a good conversation. That's certainly a community I'd like to see us go back to again at some point in the future to continue the dialogue. Our next scheduled meeting will be the, and we have to send out a poll to our committee, but would be the week of August nineteenth. And that would tentatively be in the, I think the way we had it slotted, the southered area of town would be next up on the list. Any questions, comments at all?
I have a comment, I just did, it was a nicely attended group, and one of the things that really turned out just to, I guess coincidence, is that Roberta Van Anda, who at one point was a Rumson Board Member, and in fact, at one point served on the State Board of Ed, happens to live there. So it was nice to have her there, especially because she just became so very, very supportive of all of the things that she heard. So I think a lot of her community, you know, certainly looks to her because of her experience with boards of education. So it's those kinds of situations where you see somebody like that going like this, you tend to do this too, so, I mean, it was great that she was there.
And I did forget one thing that wasn't in the minutes, but it was in my own personal notes. They've encouraged us to contribute on a regular basis to their newsletter, which I believe publishes monthly, so I reached out, well, actually it's in my draft, so I haven't reached out yet, but I will reach out, to the community to kind of find out what their deadlines are, and kind of what material they'd like, and then we'll gather with Mr. Isola and your team, and with, you know, Mark, and kind of discuss kind of what we want to put in there.
Yeah, so great job last night, Mr. Thor, I thought the meeting was productive. I must say that each time we go to the Equestria Community and/or they come to us, we tend to leave those meetings feeling really good about that relationship. And I think that really is about what community engagement is, is building an understanding for the work we're doing. And I think we did a good job, and kudos to the committee and those that were able to participate from the audience, and to their community, right? For being open-minded and trying to understand. So I wanted to just comment that I think we're building a very positive relationship with that community, which is, you know, I think four hundred and fifty homes, right? That are not enrolling students. They don't, their children are launched if they are parents. So they're important, they're voters, they're, you know, very active in community happenings. So each and every time we deal with them though, they really do say, you know, "You guys got it together," you know, I think that's a quote when I hear...
They were impressed with our work.
As for the flow of information, I think we should, as a committee, my recommendation to you as the chair would be to appoint Debbie Tarpe, who is a seated member of our Community Interaction and a member of that resident, to be the liaison of information back. She already did that once, gave them information. She asked us for some updates just as an individual, we gave it to her, and she fed it to them. So not everyone was in the know in that group, like even the thing with Mrs. Okerson pointed out about the candidates, right? You know, so the point is, I think we have a great liaison in Debbie who sits on the committee and lives there, and could be that liaison. I think it's just a very fluid, natural opportunity for us to utilize our committee as a connection to that.
What I'll do is, when I reach out and kind of ask them what their deadline dates are, I'll tie her in, if she's interested in being that liaison, I agree with you, she'd be ideal.
She is certainly a very good and active member of our committee, and I believe she sits on another committee, maybe policy. So I just think we have those resources, we should utilize them.
Thank you.
I would also suggest, and we certainly don't want to be exclusive of any citizens in our community, so if we are thinking of preparing, even if it's a short blurb and getting it to them, we haven't had the same connection with the villages since Sylvie, Mr. Sanisak, and Mr. Gurman, probably remember him, I know Ron does. But we have at least two other over fifty-five communities in town, and it might be worth at least making some contact with them and saying, you know, "This is something we're doing for this group, we'd like to at least share this with you." If they do nothing with it, they do nothing with it, but we certainly don't want to be touching here and not touching there.
And we are on my list of potential spots in town. As we move around town for the meetings, I would like to explore in the fall, potentially having it either in the villages or, I mean, the name is escaping me, but off of Five Twenty-four.
Surry Downs.
Thank you, in Surry Downs.
Mr. Gurman.
I know we had a wonderful meeting last year with real estate people, but I'm wondering, for instance, the Chamber of Commerce, if we could perhaps have a meeting with them as well at some point.
That'll be on my list, Mr. Gurman.
Might be something to think about. Chamber of Commerce is doing their program on a Tuesday night in July at the old Barnes and Nobles in building. They have a program there, and that might be something... I see you shaking your head, Mr. Isola, was that about that? Okay. They were, they are doing a program there, and I know that we have the flyer available to us, and maybe that's something that you might want to reach out to Mr. Isola, he's got the flyer, and we can talk about, maybe it's worth doing. And I know we've also talked about Halt Day, so, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to reach out to so many different groups, so thank you. Please.
Can I add something, and you brought this up, sort of touched on this, is during the election, they reached out to us, the Equestria reached out to us and sent us a list of questions that they asked us to respond to. So they've been very, very involved.
Well, actually, it's very interesting, why don't you speak to that?
Mark's friend was saying that she didn't hear from any candidates. And I brought up the email and the date, and I said, "Here's the thank you for sending it," and it was distributed to the residents, and she's like, "Oh, okay." And the rest of them, and they were like, "Oh, yeah, we read that," so, you know.
Yeah, I remember responding to the extensive list of questions.
And I know a few years ago, you know, when Chrissy and I ran, and we went out and we had a chance to speak with them one-on-one, and I love when people ask good questions and also come with ideas because it becomes a great conversation and a productive conversation.
Well, we spoke to it last night, it's just, it's a good thing to remember that this is a community, you know, from north to south, east to west. It's inclusive and it's not just parents. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Malley.
Operations has not met since our last meeting, but the Fall Delegate Assembly, I received a notification that the deadline for submitting any resolutions for consideration at the Fall Delegate Assembly is September nineteenth. So I know that in Legislative Advocacy, we spoke about potentially putting a resolution together, so just wanted to let everyone know that.
Mrs. Malley, I'd be remiss if I did not say in public, thank you for being here considering you just had surgery a week ago.
Oh, thank you very much.
Dr. Lo.
We actually, this is our second board meeting, so we had education this month, so...
Pull the mic, yeah, pull the mic closer.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so we did, I was wondering, there's nothing coming up, but we did have our education, we've had two board meetings this morning, so I do not have a report.
Mr. Miller.
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, June nineteenth. Mr. Sanisak introduced Mrs. Sabre as a district broker for property and casualty. A review of the different lines of coverage and any changes was provided to the committee. Mrs. Sabre discussed with the committee that there were four companies that considered quoting on the job. The only quote received was from Utica. All others returned stating that they could not be competitive with the pricing. There was a discussion regarding the long-term partnership we do have with Utica. Richard Knowles, which is the company, recommended renewal with the incumbent carrier. There was a slight increase in the premium over the eighteen-nineteen year of two thousand eight hundred dollars. So a motion was made to recommend E U S contract for the package to Utica as recommended by Richard Knowles, and it was approved by the committee on the agenda this evening. Mr. Sanisak then introduced Dominic Seminelli of Brown and Brown. He discussed with the committee that our workers' compensation insurance is based on a three-year experience with N J S I G. N J S I G came in with a five percent decrease with a slight decrease experience mod. Mr. Seminelli sits quarterly with our board administration to review the workers' comp claims. A motion was made to recommend the E U S contracts for workers' comp coverage to E J, uh, N J S I G as recommended by Brown and Brown Insurance, and that was approved by the committee on the agenda. Brown and Brown gave a brief overview of the vendors that were solicited in the healthcare and stop-loss arena. Brown and Brown is recommending, recommendation was to continue with Horizon as the claim administrator and go with H M as the stop-loss carrier, which resulted in decrease of three point eight-six percent stop-loss premium and an overall premium equivalence being unchanged. We continue to be well below the state health benefits program. A motion was made to recommend E U S contracts for health coverage to Horizon for medical administration and Maxor for prescription as recommended by Brown and Brown, and that was approved by the committee and on the agenda this evening. Delta Dental Insurance was presented, and the contract included a second-year option and no increase. A motion was recommended for E U S contract for dental to Delta Dental as recommended by Brown and Brown, and is on the agenda this evening. Mr. Sanisak discussed with the committee the food service renewal contract. Review from the schools were very good and sales progressively increased over the months. Aramok, after negotiations, came in with a guarantee of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. A motion was made to recommend the renewal with Aramok for two hundred and thirty-five thousand guarantee, was approved by the committee, is on for approval this evening. Currently, the student lunches are two dollars and ninety cents. The two thousand nineteen-twenty paid lunch equity program is recommending the price increase to three dollars. The Finance Committee is recommending an increase to two dollars and ninety-five cents. A motion was made to recommend the price lunch increase to two ninety-five, and it was approved by the committee and is on for the agenda this evening. Mr. Sanisak discussed a new P O S system and its intended purchase with the committee, and more information will be coming in the upcoming months. Mr. Sanisak presented the Finance Committee a proposed M I C I A equipment lease, a motion to recommend the M C I A equipment lease was approved by the committee and is on the agenda this evening. Mrs. Sanisak informed the committee we are negotiating with E S S to provide intense therapeutic counseling, which we heard the presentation this evening, and is on the addendum to the agenda this evening. Transits were recommended for approval as submitted, and the committee approved them, and is on the agenda this evening. The April tenth, two thousand nineteen minutes were reviews approved by the committee. I participated in a presentation with senior administration and Mr. Bon Giovanni, who was supposed to be quiet but did not, at the New Jersey School Board Association to their field service representatives about our future ready path. field service representatives about our future, our ready path. Graduation at Middle School South went extremely smooth. The weather was perfect. The students were very excited, and they all looked sharp. The next Finance Committee meeting has not been set. I want to wish all the staff and students a nice, relaxing, enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Nice to have friends.
Mr. Bonjavani, may I?
Please.
I would be remiss if I didn't magnify Mr. Miller's presentation, what was presented at Finance and what the Finance Committee has assisted in putting in the agenda tonight is effectively an absolutely flat renewal on all of our insurances as a whole. Property and casualty up less than a percent, health down a less than a percent. We're talking about over $22 million worth of business that in every other market is accelerating and going up, and due to the hard work of the Finance Committee and the wonderful people I have the privilege of working with in the business office, we're putting amazing renewals on the agenda this evening. So, I just have to give credit to the employees I'm privileged to work within the business office, as well as the Finance Committee that supports that work. So, I think it's an amazing tribute to our hard work. So, thank you, Mr. Miller, and the whole Finance Committee, and I just have to say that, so thank you.
Thank you, staff.
And please, on behalf of this board, for that group who works on that, please make sure they know our appreciation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Jeffrey.
I was just going to ask a question. Any word of whether a budget is coming out the 30th?
I'm sorry?
Is a state budget coming out on the 30th?
Nobody knows. It's actually strange that they're saying nothing. There's no negotiations, there's nothing. It's going to be, Sunday night is going to be, I don't know. We were talking about that earlier this morning, and who knows?
Who knows?
Okay.
Sir?
Unless you've heard something.
I have the budget right here. No. No, but what I will say is, and I meant to include this in my part, please forgive me, I was contacted today by the Governor's Advance Team. I don't know, they would not give me topic, but the Governor is looking to make an announcement on July 2nd in one of our schools. It is clearly not specific to Howell, so that would lead me to believe that something's happening in Trenton. I don't think he's here to talk about the budget either. I have my suspicions, see me offline, but just so everybody knows, so the board knows, the Governor may be using our schools, and they are public buildings. I kind of felt obligated to meet with the advance team of one that came rushing out from Trenton with very short notice, so that they can take a look at the space and see if it would work. So, we'll see what that's about on July 2nd. I am planned to be on vacation, so, and it's not a school announcement. He said, "You're welcome to come in, Mr. Isola." I said, "You know, I don't think it was my place to be there, not knowing what the announcement was about," but, again, I'll talk more off the days about my personal thoughts on what that might be about, but at the end of the day, I just wanted the board to know that the Governor may be in Howell on Tuesday 2nd, and he may be making an announcement, and that may mean that something's happening in Trenton that could lead to a budget, maybe not related at all, I'm not sure. So, that was a lot about nothing, other than we may see the Governor in Howell.
On the 2nd, if they don't make a budget by Sunday night, he won't have any employees to escort him here, so I don't know.
Dr. Lo.
So, is that typical? Is that something that typically happens at the Governor's level?
In my experience here in the district, Governor Christie used the Southerd Enrichment Center to do a town hall meeting. They asked for that, and we granted that space. This is only the second time that a Governor has asked to utilize a building, but they tend to use school auditoriums and locations as backdrops for their announcements about things. You know, if I were, yeah, so, I don't think it's regular, but I think it's normal cost of business.
And I'm not sure what part you are asking, but the part about not knowing what it's about, that's unusual.
Based on the comments from my friends here, I won't bother to prepare any welcoming comments. Mrs. Okerson, nothing. Mrs. Mangano, nothing. Pardon me? I was also going to mention the Future Ready Program, and it was very nice that you guys did a great job with that presentation. I did receive a call from school boards, actually, two different people called me to say how impressed they were with that. I mentioned earlier already that I wanted to point out what a great job the staff did with getting graduation ready, considering what the weather looked like just a few hours before. Please, again, make sure that they receive our thanks. Last Tuesday, I attended a meeting in Monroe. I've mentioned it before, this group, SEL4 New Jersey. It's an amazing group in terms of the number of people who are involved, people from colleges, from the department, from different health agencies, different mentally, from yoga studios, from all different walks. There are five or six different groups that are working on different pieces, and I'll mention two of them in particular. One is, there's a group that the teacher colleges have gotten together, and what they're doing is, they're really trying to talk to new teachers coming out about SEL practices and how to start thinking about incorporating this into their future careers. It was funny, because, again, not every group understands what other groups do, and the one woman in that group said, you know, "Maybe this is something that could be included in CUSAC," to which there were 14 of us who immediately, like, just shook our head, like, "No, that's the last thing you need to have in there." The group that I was participating in is Policy, and leading that policy group is actually New Jersey School Boards Association. And in my mind, I think that's where the real piece of the work that this group is working with is coming out of, because you can have teachers understand it coming out of school, and you can have everything else, but unless you have board members who are understanding and willing and supportive to go ahead and do this type of work, you know, it doesn't matter what anybody else has said to them. As a matter of fact, Mr. Isola, I will give you credit, I stole your line from it, and I said, you know, "This is from the Future Ready Program." I said, "This is not initiative, this is a culture change." I did give you credit, I mentioned your name, and a couple of people there seemed to understand what I was saying, that this is really something that boards need to get behind. So, Vince from School Boards, who runs the new board member orientation, I would anticipate that this is going to become part of the leadership training, maybe not new school board member training, but certainly the leadership programs from school boards in the future. The other thing I wanted to point out was that, you've heard us say it a couple of times, and you're aware of the fact that Mr. Isola has been serving on New Jersey School Boards Task Force for Mental Health. Their report is supposed to be coming out either this week or next week, and what I'd really like to do is kind of assign it to a committee of one at this point, and that's me. When it first comes out, really, I want to dive into it as deep as I can, and for lack of a better term, once I have it and once I've had a chance to go through it, I'll give you the book report on it. You know, certainly share it with everybody, but I'd like to really take a close look, and certainly this board has talked to Mr. Isola and his administration and staff so many times about these programs, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity to look and see what's coming out of the fine work of the committee that he's been serving on and how we can continue to do things in the district. I won't say start, because I know they've already been in place. And I'll finish up there.
Thank you. It is now time for the discussion item. Discussion item this evening is the Board Retreat.
I know that we have sent out a couple reminders. At the last meeting, we had mentioned that if anybody had any items that they thought they would like to see included on the retreat to get back to Dr. Lo, so I don't, I think last you told me you had not received any?
No.
Again, it's not too late. If you have anything that you'd like to see maybe included in the retreat, I'd certainly reach out to Dr. Lo with that. Anything you want to talk about with the retreat coming up?
I could share the tentative...
Well, I was going to say, we have SEL Wellness, Strategic Planning, Branding, Logan Lobo, Board of Ed, South About.
Great.
I think that's...
Sounds good.
If we get that all done, we'll be, it'll be very successful.
That's good.
With your permission, might be in order to just add an addenda item, adding the date for the retreat, now that we've settled on it, to the board calendar, and we'll notice that tomorrow, just out of good practice.
Please do.
So, that'll be A2.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, July 30th, 4:30, I believe, is that?
Yep.
Location to be determined? And if I may, as long as we're talking about that, the July board meeting, depending, the schedule for the ESIP is a little fluid right now, but the air may be off in this building, so location for that to be determined as well, just as a...
Someplace with air. It's got to be someplace with air.
I believe some people are voting for someplace without air.
No, 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 it's got to be someplace with air. Otherwise, let me know how it went.
Mr. Isola, when you, the Board itself eval, can you also add board goals they tie into the self-eval?
As the Chair notes.
Just a slash, board goals. Thank you.
Mr. Sanisak?
Time for the Consent Agenda and the two addenda items. Is it Ms. Malli and Mr. Miller?
It is.
And I would like to reread A1 into the agenda after the gentleman's presentation. Approve the Professional Service Contract for Effective School Solutions for the 1920 school year in the amount of $259,091 for intensive therapeutic services from 9/1/2019 to 8/31/2020, including the 2020 ESY. With that, may we take...
Did you say you had A1 and 2, or just A1?
A1, I read in. A2 will be noticing the, adding the calendar date for the 30th at 4:30, at a location to be determined.
That has air.
May I take it around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Malli?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes.
The Consent Agenda and the two addenda items are approved. Nine votes in favor, none opposed. Second public comment, sir. I remind you of the motion read into the agenda for the first public comment, and the officer with respect to time of the quorum will be the President. Mr. Bonjavani, may the floor be open?
Open.
Seeing none, may the floor be closed?
Move it.
Second.